Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, September 26, 2024 meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room at 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville. We have Lake Kim recording tonight. Is anyone else recording? Hearing none. We do have a quorum this evening with John Cabral, David Lodge, and myself, members Dan Wulga and is absent and Jack may be on his way. Item number one on our agenda is a public hearing for Pinecrest Village, which has been continued to tonight upon the application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. For a two lot subdivision off Hickory Lane and Pinecrest Drive, Assessors Map 043, Block 007, Lot 001, possible vote. We have a request to continue until October 10, 2024. Would someone like to make a motion to continue this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the Pinecrest Village public hearing to our 1010 meeting in the Lakeville Police Station.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number two. We have a public hearing modification of a site plan review, 5 Harding Street, which has been continued to tonight upon the application for modification to a site plan review previously approved to change from one large building to six smaller buildings. Site layout and appurtenances to change to accommodate new layout. Possible vote. And we have the applicant here. If you could just state your name for the record.
John Kelly.
All right, and what would you, what do you have for us this evening?
So, good evening. So, we've been doing quite a bit of work with the peer review. And so, we've had some, let's say, some good back and forth dialogue and responses. And there was some additional information that was requested. We provided that information. So, we emailed it off to Kathy here and hoping that that was, it made it to everybody's. So, again, I think we have just a couple of items that we're down to based upon our review. There's things like a handicap parking space we had located behind the building and stuff. There was a question about adding curbing, ballards, other things. But we were hoping to maybe do it with striping and things like that to help with the maintenance. But really, the handicap spot was going to be located directly behind the building. So, we felt like the building itself, we were shielding it. So, adding additional curbing and ballards around that, I thought would make a little bit more difficult for a handicap, you know, individual park their car, get out of the car, things like that. So, there was one question there. We're not opposed to, it just, we didn't really understand the thought process on that. But, you know, they wanted us to add curves and ballards. I can tell you which item it was.
Yeah, I do have it here. It's item five.
Item five, yes.
And I know from peer review, what they said is it ensures compliance with best practices for accessible parking design. So, just in keeping with best practices, I mean, I'll lend a Dean, you know, thoughts and the other board members. But I know there's very specific standards for the ADA compliance.
That's what I was going to say is, you know, where does this fall on ADA requirements? Because, you know, you end up hiring somebody to work in the office that handicapped and, you know, you start to run afoul of things there if you haven't fulfilled their requirements.
Well, again, I think, I think we actually addressed that we would meet ADA because there was a question about slope and things like that. We did respond to that. Again, this building's 33 feet long. Typical car parking space is 18 feet. So, again, we felt like that we had additional building area, almost 15 feet. So, the car is going to be really tucked in behind that. It was going to be at grade. So, again, no issues. We don't need to add ramps. We were basically going to be able to have it flush with the curb. So, there's something we'd get into the building. But I think it just, it really didn't, we were having a, we were thinking it was making it more difficult to add a curbing here because, again, you have 18 feet. Somebody's going to have to have curbing. Then they're going to have to pull in here versus pulling in and pulling straight in behind the building. Now, instead, they got to go in here, back in, pull back, pull in, pull out. It just seemed like there's a lot more.
Yeah.
To me, I mean, I understand if it was, if it was, if the building was only 18 or 17 feet wide, I totally get it, you know. But it's 33 feet wide. The car's only 18, so you have seven feet on either end to protect. So, they can just pull straight in instead of trying to pull in back up. We just felt like, we looked at it for the geometry and stuff like that, it just seemed like it was a lot more hassle than for being able to just have this all flush. So, again, if it's not flush, then all of a sudden we have more difficulty. I can just bring the sidewalk and the paving at the slope to the same grade. Whereas if I had to add islands, now all of a sudden I got to start looking at ADA issues or how do I either cut in a ramp and stuff like that. It just seemed like the, just constructability purposes, we felt it was, it was not as, you know. You know, it's not in a high-traffic area. Again, if you came coming around here, the flow would move from here and would slide in right behind the building. That's why we're locating that. So, and it's right next to the building. It couldn't be. That was one of the locations. There was also a handicap spot over here that we were thinking about as well. So, I mean, we were, there were two spots, but, you know, anybody that's handicapped theoretically is going to really be at this building too. So, you know. But, and this, you know, we didn't understand why you had curbing and ballards in this location. So, I mean, we could designate this, stripe this all off for the handicap spot is what our thought was.
What do you think, John?
I'm okay with the, just the striping. I understand what you're saying. Like, I feel like where the location of the handicap spot is, I feel like the curbing and the ballards are going to more be more of a hindrance and more of a spot to get hit by a truck. Or, I mean, I know that's the idea of it, right? But I feel like if you're putting it out there, then it's more of a... So, I mean, I, from this, from this drawing, I can't see where the, is there a better picture of where the handicap behind the building is? Or is that, you're moving one there, right? I think there is one over there.
There was one there located here. And then what we were proposing was that to put one right behind the building. So, that if somebody's handicapped, say, somebody with a disability, they could potentially get right into the building. This is going to be the office building, you know, office portion of the building, dispatch, things like that. These other folks here, I mean, you know, you're not going to have probably a handicap because they're truck drivers. Somebody in a wheelchair, something like that. The person that would be potentially handicapped would be in this space. So, that's why we were thinking we'd locate that space right behind that building there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sympathetic to your, to your position on it. I just, you know, hate to have ADA rear its ugly head. Could we make it a condition that we meet ADA? I mean, we need to do it anyways for the delegate's factor.
Yeah, no, yeah, I think you have to, obviously, need to, the minimum.
So, as long as it's compliant with ADA?
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Obviously, it becomes a problem.
Of course.
They don't have to be addressed, right? The first time, yeah, obviously, it's, the idea is that. We understand that right now, you, you're providing the spot as a designated spot as you're required for a private lot, right? So, but obviously.
My other company, I do have one person that was in a motorcycle accident, so he's disabled. And we provided the spot right in front of the door. He's able to get in. We actually changed the doors, started actually automatic doors now. So, we've, you know, he's been with me now over 20 years. So, after the accident, he came back, did his rehab, and came back to, and we modified and made adjustments in order to keep him a good employee. We want to do everything we can.
Right.
And, you know, I even talked with him. He's like, if I were to ever have to work down here, he's in a different company than I own, but he's like, I would love to have it right there so I could be potentially able to get out. And sometimes he has to use cane, you know, cane crutch. Sometimes he's got kind of poor stability. He's not a wheelchair, but he's like, the easier I have to get to the door is all for me. You know, I'm, I'm good. Again, that's why we located him. He likes to back his truck in, so he's able to pull out.
So, is the spot?
We were going to put it in this, this direction, yes.
So, I guess, I guess that's where, maybe that might be the concern is where the peer review was that they were thinking it was going to be perpendicular to the back of the building.
Potentially, yeah.
So, it's kind of hanging out there, which you don't want someone coming around the corner and hitting the car or hitting that person when they're getting out.
Right.
I think the intent, but it's parallel with the building, I guess.
So, we can make it a condition that we put it parallel with the building and use additional striping. We could put the, you know, the placard down at the handicap spot and stuff like that. So, that is reserved for them.
Right. I mean, it makes sense if it's going that direction that they could just pull forward rather than hitting a curb. The only other thought was maybe one bollard on the other side of it. But I don't, I don't know. If, like, like he said, it may just be more so in.
I think if you go that way, if you put a bollard on either end, then they're either backing out or backing into a spot, into a blind. Because, like you said, it's only 33 feet. They have a pickup truck, they're going to be backing out into blindly into a.
Well, that's what I thought, that's what I thought was with the geometry. Then you end up having to pull back in here, pull forward out into maybe where the trucks would go. So, I don't know, we just, we're thinking that we could come in here and somebody could pull right in here. Make it generous enough that it's wide enough. They can get out of the vehicle, open the door, not have to be pressed between cars. So, that was our thought process to potentially relocate that there.
Well, so we're good as long as it meets ADA compliance? Just for the record, Jack has joined our meeting. Hello, Jack.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Item six was still open. We tried to address that, that there was a question about what type of system we would use for a sliding gate system and that we were going to incorporate some ballards at the front of the building. So, I think they were asking for four ballards. So, we're going to install those at the front of the building.
That sounds good.
Item number nine, the civil engineer. So, the civil engineer was actually away this week. So, he's going to have the additional information and calculations for two, I think it's Wednesday, October 2. So, he'll have all that information and submit that for, to reflect that. Then there was a question regarding the vinyl sheet piles. I actually appeared before CONCOM on Tuesday night. We had a robust discussion about sheet piles. And then there was questions about, you know, could we provide additional documentation? I have provided documentation. And there's actually a study from the Army Corps of Engineers that had basically a study of the long-term applications of vinyl sheet piles and basically how this is a proven method. And then there was also an article that I had found regarding vinyl sheet piles being a durable and proven solution for shoreline protection. Again, that's some of the discussion and why, why, why I look at this, at this option. I'm working around the country on other projects. And we're using this, these applications very effectively in other markets that have areas near, you know, rivers, waterfronts, shoreline. And one of the things that we were looking to try to do on this was that because of the Pecoy Brook and trying to locate that, one of the reasons why we looked at this was to potentially to be able to cut it off and seal that versus having an earthen berm that potentially could fail over time. Again, that's, that's a typical practice here in Massachusetts with the earthen berm, but also requires maintenance. I was also, we were trying to avoid having basically people down there mowing it and cutting it and all that stuff, dumping the clippings into the, into the wetlands and stuff like that. So, that was part of our thought process, at least. It's costing us more money, but I'm fine with that. But it also kept people away from the edge of the Pecoy Brook to kind of seal it up. And then that way, there's, it's part of why we also located. There's no doors out the back. Nobody's going to be down, you know. You know, again, the previous, the previous proposal had multiple tenants and stuff like that. And, you know, it's, you know, when you, there's, I, my opinion is less control when you have a multi-tenanted building like this. And, you know, who knows what goes on down when people are either parking out here and then maybe take a walk down the brook or maybe go fishing there or do whatever. It just seemed like there'd be much more interaction. We were basically trying to seal off, you know, the Pecoy Brook from, from our developments. So, there'll be no, there'll be no need to put maintenance crews down there, cut lawn cutting, weed whacking, dumping clippings, things like that would all be avoided. So, that was part of our thought process. But, you know, we think we supplied that study from the Army Corps. I think it's about a 90-page study and it's got some really good facts in there. So, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that. But again, we wanted to supply that to the peer review. You know, and then we went in on Tuesday night to talk with CONCOM just about amending the order of conditions versus issuing a new order. So, some of this is dependent. We do have a peer review going on that's, that's dealing on a planning board, but also is, is dealing in some CONCOM issues. So, I think there's, I need to appear before the CONCOM with an amended order and just to try weave those two together. But also, it's a chicken and egg.
Yeah.
They want to know that you're good with, with this and that if we can make it conditional, then I can go back and say we're good here. So, there was a question, I said, I'm not there yet. I'm appearing Thursday night. So, again, that was some of the stuff that I needed, I just.
So, something that we've done in the past is we would make a condition with your order of conditions that says as long as there's no changes requested by conservation, you know, we'd sign off on it. If there are any changes, you'd have to just come back and just go over those changes. So, as long as there's no, you know, change to the site plan. We don't want you giving us one site plan, having changes done at CONCOM and not being the same plan.
Proven as a plan that gets changed by a board leader.
So, we would just do a conditional on conservation.
Totally understand. And I presented these same, these same boards. These boards are getting a little weathered.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't know, I'm going to have to, I hope I don't have to redo them again, but.
So, now, in regards to the vinyl sheet piling, what did CONCOM say?
So, we reviewed it and they basically, they hadn't had a chance to look at any of this documentation. But one of the, one of the members was very familiar with it. And he, so he said he would look forward to seeing that information. But they, I think they understood where I was, where my mindset was in terms of trying to utilize that for the product. And then we just had a, you know, I needed to basically supply this information that I've supplied to you to get to them. And I would submit that along with my amended order to try to, you know, incorporate that. What I'm hoping to avoid is a peer review. This site's been peer reviewed multiple times now. So, peer review, we have a peer review. And, you know, again, we've been going back and forth with this. And then whether they, they were talking about another peer review. So, I'm just hoping that.
So, that would just be for something else because they would.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we could get an approval with conditions. So, then we could either then have, have that, those conditions either reviewed by the peer review versus a whole other.
Conservation has their own condition, the planning board would have our own, so.
Understood, but again, this is where I think there's a little bit of, you know, there are some, there are some CONCOM items that are in here.
Right.
And we're trying to just, that's why I'm trying to marry the two of them together. That's why I kind of wanted to try to get the planning board going and then go in for the amended. They, they did, it wasn't a hearing. It was, I came in informally, asked for support or for direction.
Right, and we did get a letter from them saying that they were going to be on that meeting. But Kathy, we haven't gotten any further from.
No.
Could we just request that Conservation send us a memo with their determination regarding the vinyl piling? I mean, I have sort of pro and con in my mind just because I know plastic leach is at a certain temperature and I don't know, like, how the vinyl, what that temperature would be, especially being close to the wetlands and with the leaching and the microplastics. I don't know enough to make a determination. So, I'd like to hear what Conservation thinks. Other than that, it does sound like it would be more durable and avoid contact with the wetlands. But I would like to get a determination from them if we could just ask them to send a memo on that.
Item 12, and that's just, again, my civil engineer is going to supply additional information on curb numbers. And then that was on 12A. We also had 12B. We've asked, so the, to consider one-foot freeboard above the spillway. So, he's, I spoke to the civil engineer and we're going to provide that for the exhibition that he can, he could agree to, was October 2. And then the only, 13, 13B was one that we, there was a question. I mean, the, the set of plans that Bob Palucci had prepared was fully approved. And then now there's a question about, you know, I don't know if this, I don't believe this engineer had done the other reviews. But then now this engineer is bringing up that the bottom of the pond, he's concerned about the depth of the pond, which then would contradict the previous approvals. So, I guess there was a question on our end is why are we, then, why are we starting or we're starting? It seems like we're, that would have us starting all over again. So, if it was previously approved at a certain elevation, why is that now being another?
Was it missed, though? My only concern is that potentially if it was missed the last time around, we wouldn't want to miss it this time around.
Based upon the three-foot thick file that I have, and I'm not trying to be fresh, but I find it hard that it was best. But I, I'd have to go back and review the documents. But this, this site has been thorough, you know, my opinion's been thoroughly reviewed with all the documentation and all, all this stuff. But again, there's the baseline of what was approved. I don't know, I couldn't see if I can research that. But that's the one, that's one item that we, we take, we did take exception to.
So, it's just, so just to reiterate their response, it says, so back on B, Test Pit D8 showed modeling at depth of 16 inches. Given the existing grade at this location, appears to be approximately 24.75 feet. The estimated season high groundwater elevation is 23.4. Bottom of the stormwater basin at this location is 21 feet. We are concerned that the bottom of the stormwater basin is below groundwater level, which will impact the stormwater basin's storage capacity. So, are you, are you questioning those elevations or?
We're questioning elevations and the, and the capacity. So, then, you know, our response was the stormwater basin bottom elevation matches the previously approved design with both base and bottoms at the, at the same 21-foot elevation. Additionally, excess detention is provided in the form of roof infiltration, which is not accounted for in the detention volume. So, again, so we, the previous one had an elevation 21 and we've now taken the infiltration that we're adding. And so, our volumes, we are exceeding our volumes significantly. So, the concern that they had, that they're expressing about, you know, about, about the storage capacity is, they're missing the whole point. The capacity is actually less than what was previously approved. We're now doing infiltration. So, we've mitigated the capacity by having infiltration, infiltration systems. So, I, I'm, that's where we're.
So, it looks like you're, so your tests, you're showing Test Pit H showed standing water at a depth of 28 and they're saying that it was a depth of 16? Is that the difference here?
Well, that, that's one, that is one. But again, I think the, the simple answer is, is the capacity, you know, the capacity, if it held, for just for easy, if it held 100 gallons and now we took out all the water from the infiltration and now we're taking that out, even at those elevations, it's been reduced significantly. Let's just say the 60. And now we still have additional storage capacity. So, if we hadn't, if we hadn't incorporated infiltration, I could see it, I could see some logic to their, their argument. But we've already taken out so much of the infiltration through our systems that the capacity shouldn't be a non-issue whatsoever. And it is a non-issue. So, that's, that's the reason why we, we kind of, we objected to this, this issue.
Well, it seems like there's a contradiction of what they're saying the Test Pit showed compared to what you're saying the Test Pit showed. Right? So, they're showing that the depth of 16 inches and you're saying water at the depth of 28. Have you had your engineer take a look at this again or?
I, I did. And he basically said this, they've missed the, he feels they've completely missed the point in the fact that the recharge and everything else. He's like, once you take those calculations out, he said, you know, that the capacity isn't what they're talking about. The math just doesn't work from what they're assertion, so.
Can we do this? Can we have your engineer reach out to peer review? Copy myself and John on the email through Kathy, if you could, and just have that discussion so that they can come to.
Great, thank you.
I think that's what you've done. He's, he says it's a major contradiction that he should come face to face with these folks.
Well, I'd like you to write in, Jack, just so we can all be aware. Rather than having like a phone conversation, just if you could have your engineer contact our engineer, but copy us and Kathy.
We're talking via email.
Via email, please.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, yeah. So, and if they need to have any kind of, or phone conversations, stuff like that. I guess my, I've been sending everything through Kathy's. My understanding, but I have permission to send that, you have them send an email and I'm going to have them copy us all.
Well, I think you'll have to go through Kathy to get the contact information unless you have it.
Yeah, that's all.
So, but yeah, Kathy, put myself and John on it and then.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, rather than us go back and forth and. It's pointing, but if they, if they talk, I think they'll.
I think he's the key guy to get this project.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It just, I mean, to me, it reads like, there's a discrepancy, so.
Literally, there's a one-foot discrepancy from the comments, so.
Okay, so let's, that'll be an email to peer review and just copy myself, Kathy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. On the next one?
C.
Yes, that's the item C there, so is that 12?
13.
13C, I'm sorry. So, again, we've asked, so one of the questions was they, they were posing was that they felt that the, that the system as proposed didn't have enough cover. This Caltech's website and, you know, specifies it. So, one of the, I went back with my civil engineer and said, why don't we just use concrete structures? Why don't we go retain it? Proven system, we've given you the website. It's a premium system, again, more expensive than Caltech, but again, requires less cover. What's the, would put the, the question of cover to bed. So, I'm okay with changing that. If that's something that maybe the civil engineer, our civil engineer could potentially also address in the email.
Yes.
That would be fantastic, so, great, thank you. 14, so again, we've just asked our civil engineer just to follow up on that with a volume report. So, I don't think this, and then again, on 16, same, same comment as 14. 19.
Can we just pull this up to 19?
I'm sorry.
I had highlighted a couple of things myself on 18. Just under environmental partners' response on nine sixteen, we recommend that the SWP P P, the applicant mentioned, is submitted for review and approval prior to start of construction. So if we could just get, make sure that that's not forgotten, so we don't have to have you back or for any reason, just make, you know, maybe asterix that. And then also the one right below it for B, we recommend adding a note to the modified plans that all proposed catch basins require silt sacks. So as long as it shows that on the modified plans, you should be good.
Actually, can I bring up one thing?
Sure.
Nineteen, the O and M, O and M plan?
Yep.
So there was a question from Concom about the O and M plan. I guess our, our response and our, was that we would, you know, we would try to adhere to the previously approved O and M plan. You know, whatever it was, we would live with it, we would just update the information.
Based on your property.
So I guess that was our, I don't know if we conveyed it properly or the way we wrote it, but there was a question, I know that the chairwoman had a question about, you know, were we trying to deviate from, no, we weren't at all. We were trying to say what was approved is what we'll live with, and we'll incorporate that and we'll update it. So that was what I was trying to convey, and it seemed like there was a lot of question about whether we were trying to deviate or something like that. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear. And then there was a question about the, under, I think the next one, there was a question regarding the illicit discharge statement, so I provided that as well.
Thank you. So now, just going back to the O and M plan, I think the way I read it from peer review was just make sure that it's updated to reflect the current owner as opposed to anything that was previous, so as long as that's.
And we were fine with that, I guess, but there seemed to be some misunderstanding. So I just wanted to clear, make sure, I wasn't sure if I wasn't clear, but we would, we would update the O and M plan just to the ownership, all that stuff and whatever the transfer. But again, whatever was agreed to, we were, we were going to live with.
Okay.
So we weren't going to try to get out of anything or try to make it simpler or anything else. We just said whatever's approved previously, we'll live with.
Okay. That one's good.
So twenty was the illicit discharge statement, so you'll have that copied. And then the other questions regarding the general comments.
Concom question.
These were, we were trying to address those directly with the Concom. And then, again, the vinyl sheet files, we think we provided some good information. If they need important information, we're happy to provide that as well. I think, I'm on twenty-five.
Can we go, can we just on twenty-three and twenty-four, just because it's talking about the slopes?
Sure.
And I know that, you know, you're saying that it's just your employees, but the only issue that I see with that is because we're talking, there's one of issue in the front of the, like at the driveway. So if it was bad conditions, if the fire department had to go out, and if there was some sort of incident where they slipped off, I just, I do think it's good practice to add that guardrail just in case, because I know you're saying your employees are the only ones accessing it, but you never know in an emergency situation who else could, you know, potentially have to use that road and access it in bad conditions, too.
Okay, again, so the item was closed from their thing, that's why I skipped it, I'm sorry, but.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, so we did.
And I, I don't know why they put closed, because it says we continue to recommend installation, and I do, you know, appreciate that recommendation as well as, you know, for the next one, too, where it says our stance is consistent with our response in comment twenty-three, that they continue to recommend the installation of the guardrail.
Could we, could we do, would guardrail be acceptable on that? I'd like, I just don't want, I'd rather make it more, I'd rather have a wood look than.
Yes, yes. If you're willing to do the wooden guardrail, that'd be ideal.
I prefer it, yeah. I don't want it to look like a superhighway coming in there, so it's pretty cool, so, great, thank you.
So wooden. Guardrail. Yeah, and there's some actually on Kenneth Walt's Drive, I think they did a nice look on wooden guardrail, too, if you want to take a look at that.
Well, definitely. Yeah, I just don't want the metal.
Right, no, I totally agree. All right, moving on.
Twenty, so I'm on twenty-five. So I think there's, so the driveway, I don't think they looked at the mass DOT permits, and I think that there's the question about the poles, and there's two poles down there now, but it's been designed, we don't own the pole, so moving the pole is not an option, but the way that it's been, I think they're looking at the wrong pole, they're looking at the old pole.
So it looks like there's a pole in between both.
There's two poles there, we're still working, it's been, Paul Palucci started working on us, I think, three years ago, at Verizon, so they've added the new pole, and then one of the other poles is getting taken out. So that's what's in that mass DOT permit. I can provide a copy of the mass DOT permit, but I think it's, I think that there, there's a misunderstanding is what I was.
Yeah, but there's something you can clarify with them.
I believe so, and I think we just need to maybe give them the mass DOT permit, which clearly shows, so.
So now, are you saying that the pole in the middle there is being moved?
There's a new pole that was just installed, Verizon came out and installed it. They're not moved, they are not moving, you know, we asked them, we begged them and said, is there any way you could go to either side of the driveway?
Oh, they're not.
They said, no, they said, that's your location, we own the pole, that's where it's going.
Verizon?
With Verizon.
What do you have for electricity over there? Is it Middleborough or T-Mile?
It's Middleborough.
It is Middle, they're really good usually.
They are, but it's not grand pole. If it was their pole, we would never, it's Verizon pole.
Did they tell you why it has to be right there?
It's something about the distances they have, that's the best they could do. It's, I've had people working on it since we bought it, even before we bought it, we've been trying to work on it, and it's just that we've gotten, they're going around, but again, it's been approved by mass DOT, but that's, so we don't have any flexibility right now at all with them.
You go in the middle of the night and dig it up and move.
It's like, no, no, no.
Don't say that.
Can we put that as a condition?
Yeah.
I'll accept that one.
I like that.
I do like that one.
That's a shame, though, that really is a shame, because.
It's definitely, it's not ideal, but it'll slow down the trucks, I guess, so.
Yes, yeah, I'm trying. Maybe just make sure there's some reflectors and whatnot during the winter. Oh, I was really hoping that was going to be moved, because it looked like something was.
Yeah. So twenty-six, again, the civil engineer, we're just going to work with the Lakeville Fire Department, we've been in touch with the chief, and so just to locate that, so I don't even know if we can make that as a condition, that we would just locate per, you know, per his, we'll bring the water line in and we'll locate the hydrant and stuff for his final location. He just wants to come out, actually, he wanted to physically come out and, you know, put a stake in the ground and say, this is where I want it, and we're good with that.
That'll be all part of the permit process when you go through with them anyways, for them to look at the plans. You're not going to approve them until they get a spot, so it's, yeah, as long as.
I just, when we talked to them, he sent a letter, and we talked, I did talk to him personally, and he said that he just would like to actually come out and physically, you know, locate with us. And I said, I'll meet you myself, so I think we're on the same page. We got the letter that, and then the other questions he had was about the culvert and stuff like that, making sure the turning radius is everything, that's part of all the other drawings that we've done and everything else. So when we gave him the specifications on the pipe and all that stuff, to show that it was heavy duty, he gave me the weights of the trucks.
Oh, good.
So we're good with, the chief's been great, so, no issues there.
All right, so should we add a, make sure we add a condition for the fire department approval? Do you think?
Well, I mean, again, I think it's going to be part of the permit process, like he's not going to get, he's not going to get the approval, but, I mean, he still has to meet, I guess, it's still the HJ, so he still has to meet the requirements of the fire department, so I guess.
Yeah, we're fine with a condition.
Yeah, it's not like, yeah, you've already.
They've made the recommendations from the fire department, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, next item?
And twenty-seven, and he was just going to update that.
Okay, October second?
Yeah, October second, we would have that updated.
All right, all of that.
That's all, so only sixteen pages.
That's all.
Paul Palucci's has about five hundred, so probably more, probably a thousand.
Does anybody on the planning board have any comments, questions, concerns at this point?
No.
Okay, do we have any comments, questions, concerns?
No, we had questions answered in the previous meetings.
Okay.
We just needed to bump over.
All right.
See the updates.
All right, so I think at this point, Kathy, if we could potentially get a set of standard conditions drafted along with those items that we've kind of called out this evening, obviously pending the additional peer review on those items that you still have to submit. So we could start the conditions, at least, working towards getting that, and then depending on if there's still some items that we have to iron out, we can come back at that point and look at it, but let's just keep moving forward and. October.
Ten.
I think, so if you're planning on submitting on the second, I don't think you'll be in time for the tenth meeting. So I'd like to put you on the twenty-second, twenty, twenty-sixth. Because that ten-ten meeting is also pretty packed, so.
The ten-ten, the ten-ten's, I'm fine, I'm actually out of town, the ten-ten date. Is it the twenty-sixth or twenty-fourth?
Twenty-four, sorry.
I was going to say, I know I have someone on the twenty-sixth.
The Saturday.
Twenty-four, sorry, sorry.
I think I got a wedding, now I gotta go, so I can't make that.
So ten-twenty-four, twenty-four.
That would be, that'd be great, the twenty-fourth would be, work well for it.
All right, so it'll give time for peer review, we can get, work up some conditions, and then hopefully get this buttoned up.
Great, thank you very much.
In Concom, so.
No, understood, but at least this gives me a starting point also to get the amended order filed and stuff, too. So I think, I just wanted to be able to report back to them that we're heading in a good direction, I felt like we were. And so I tried to just relay that to them the other night.
Excellent.
Appreciate everything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Oh, actually, we need a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue Five Harding Street until our ten-twenty-four meeting.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Think about it.
I will.
All right. Agenda item number three, we have a public hearing for site plan review for two-four Bedford Street, continued to this evening upon the application for site plan review and approval submitted by Twin Boys LLC for proposed contractor base presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers, possible vote. We have a request to continue to October tenth. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to continue two-and-four Bedford Street to the October tenth meeting.
Can I make a comment before we?
Well, let's have a motion in a second and discussion.
Okay. There was a comment about, the last time, about kind of the configuration of the building.
I don't think we can discuss it without.
Talk about that.
Right, yeah, I don't think we can discuss it without them here, right? Because they've asked to continue, so we can't really.
Oh, they've asked to continue, yeah, okay, all right, understand.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so your comment, you can deal with it next time.
Yep.
On October tenth. All right, agenda item number four, proposed zoning amendment Harding Street Jeffrey Tochio, possible vote.
That guy was here for.
So, was he planning on attending?
What is this?
Oh, I don't know.
In the lobby.
I don't know.
I don't know if he thought that the other thing was for Harding Street, the same thing.
I don't know, he went out and shook somebody's hand.
Because he was here for the.
Who is this?
Oh.
Maybe he thought he had a time, since there was another item on the agenda.
Well, if you want to take a seat right here and state your name and who you're with for the record.
I've got some boards, excuse me one second.
Sure. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Big show in hell.
Thank you.
These are in case you can't see the boards.
Oh, thank you.
There's a lot of people who are too proud to say I can't see it.
Thank you. That'd be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for your patience. We miscalculated outside, we're counting applicants, and we were off by one. My name is Jeff Tochio, I'm attorney at DTM Law up in Hingham, and with me, Chris Duffy, who's the VP of Operations and Facilities for TNK Asphalt Services, and then Steve Rose, who's the President and CEO, is to his right. We're here this evening looking at, requesting the planning board to assist and propose a zoning change that would be up for the special town meeting, which is coming up in November, looking at the properties, they've got it, it's basically the properties that you see with North Up, and what we're looking at is, I'm going to pull this off, one, two, three. So it's located on the south side of Harding, right over on the Taunton Road, Taunton Street, across from Millennium Circle, which is the industrial zone, which is over to the, to the north. The existing property is vacant now, and it's basically the business, which is shown in the red today, and then in the yellow, it's got the residential zoning on it. It's got significant resources, it's got conservation restrictions, so it's characterized by conservation restriction land to the south, and then as you get up towards Harding Street, it's got, you know, everything is basically flat, kind of prepared, vacant, and available for development when you go over there. It's about fifteen acres that we're looking at on the Lakeville side, and then there's also a connection over to some property in Taunton, which goes up, down, again, to the south, and it kind of goes deeper, and it will allow for them to use the two properties in conjunction with each other. The Taunton property is industrial zoned, and then what's happening here is that the business zone in the town doesn't really fit what we're looking at for uses, and I can go through what the uses are. We've taken a look at the business zone, it's kind of, it's more general business, retailing in nature, and we've spoken to Nate Darling, who's gone through the proposed uses, thinks can fit, you know, et cetera, we'd have to go through, jump through a lot of hoops, and I think the consensus is that it's more attuned to the industrial zone. This corner of town, it fits particularly where the industrial zone is all across the street. You folks have a track record of, you know, contiguous parcels, do include parcels that would jump over the street, so I think that that makes some good sense. I passed out to you folks, basically, just a handout that goes through some of, some of the issues that we're looking at as we go forward. They're seeking to develop the land as its new corporate headquarters. TNK Asphalt, just highly regarded employer, they've got one hundred and thirty-five employees, they do a lot of training, they've got, you know, TNK Academy, where they train employees to allow them to be up and leave mobile within the company. They're currently in Whitman, they're on about five acres, and they're looking at coming down here and making this, just a big investment in a ten-thousand-square-foot building with associated parking around it, and then. Associated parking. South is up, so it's a little disorienting, it's, the evidence kind of goes upside down, so I apologize for that. But they're looking at ten-thousand-square-foot building with the parking that's arrayed around it, that would support building of that size. And then they've got this other area that, there, that goes over and back to the package store, and it's outside of all the conservation restriction areas, and it's perfect for what their use would be, which would be the storage and then processing, intermittent processing, so what they do is they can bring in, when they do different work, there'll, you know, be different earth products that can come in, they'll store them in bins, and then a couple of times a year, they'll be in a position where they can go in, process, and then those are reused and go out into different jobs that they have. They're also looking at some cement-type products that would come in that could be sold for retail, all things that fit. Again, we have to go through a lot of hoops. If it was industrial, it all comes in within the whole, you know, processing facility, et cetera. It's just kind of hand and glove for the industrial zone. It would also be consistent with the industrial zoning in Taunton next to it, and also consistent with all of the zoning over across, across the street. You've got Millennium Circle, we just, I picked up some of this. The property continues up south off, but what I did was I changed it so that, you know, it could kind of bring in, take a look at the ten-thousand-square-foot building, so that's a five-thousand-square-foot footprint, compare it to, you know, what's over across the street. We've done a lot of work studying, looking at the master plan that was put together in the 2030 for Lakeville, and we are in priority development area. There's actually a Harding Street priority development area that was first identified in two thousand and eight, and again, work's been done on that in, I think, two thousand thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. And there are also other goals that are stated forth in the vision for the 2013 master plan, main themes, support the local economy while exploring additional opportunities to create new businesses and economic development in appropriate areas. There are other listings which are under. under the second section, which is the land use. And we went through and, you know, when we were judging whether this was something that we thought was within something of interest, we did our research with respect to, you know, what was in the master plan. And there's an articulation of economic development, but within appropriate areas. Talked a lot about preserving the rural areas where that's appropriate. I know there's a lot of residential growth which is going on in town. We're very unique because we've got an opportunity to have this commercial industrial growth, which is in, I think, a perfectly situated portion of town. It's got all of that highway access, it's got the water facilities that are already there in the road. And again, it's a priority, you know, priority area for development already long established by the town. If you look at goal two one, maintain Lakeville semi-rural character by encouraging growth that matches its surroundings, I think that that basically fits and that goes to growing in the right places in the right way and that's just what I articulated previously. Strategy two dash one dash one, focus future large scale business growth to key locations along Route eighteen, Route forty-four and Route one oh five. And then what's got this description? Lakeville's existing commercial corridors are already well positioned for growth due to their existing business and industrial zoning districts, highway access and some supportive infrastructure such as municipal water service from Taunton along parts of Route eighteen, Route forty-four, Route one oh five, that's us. Moreover, this master plan and prior planning efforts such as the two thousand and five master plan in the town's two thousand and thirteen priority development areas have identified sites along Route eighteen, forty-four, one oh five as appropriate for more intensive commercial growth in order to attract large scale, high value growth in these key locations. Planning board should, and it just says revisit commercial industrial zoning language to provide incentives for business growth, for example, reducing parking requirements, et cetera. The board can also consider changing the zoning in some key locations that are experiencing undesirable low value commercial development. We think that that perfectly describes the situation here. It's not that it's underutilized or that it's got existing development which doesn't match, it's vacant. And I spoke with Miggy's, who are the owners, they've got the auto dealership. And I asked, I said, why did you buy it? Why didn't you develop it? And the story's a common story. Excuse you one second. It's a common story for a lot of my automotive clients. Post-COVID, they changed supply chains. There isn't the value for the dealerships to take on the inventory. They used to get, they used to get incentives, money for absorbing inventory onto their sites and that was part of the business models. Here, this property had value to them because they saw all that frontage and then they looked and isn't this, you know, isn't this a good site for an automotive dealership? That change, changed the way that they looked at this and then the company wound up looking at a site and using the site purchasing in random that already was developed for the automotive use. They found that this was kind of surplus and there's already now kind of an over, not an overuse, but I think that they said, to use her words, all of the badges, the brands represented along the strip so that it just doesn't quite fit for them. This use, it's a really good use. The assessed value currently, I think the town gets about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars per year for the assessments, that's at the ten fifty-five per thousand. We had estimated that it would increase it by another, let's say, thirty-six thousand, getting it somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. Zero kids, you know, zero, you know. The amount of town services for this are really quite slight. So looking at this, in it came, we spoke to Nate Darling, super helpful, we talked it through and he was the one who said, you know, we do have a special town meeting coming up in November and the timelines were really quick. So we coordinated with him to see if we could be before you folks. I do a lot of zoning work in other towns and sometimes it's us going to planning boards and talking to planning boards about having them sponsor zoning amendments. Other times we'll have, you know, if it's not a special town meeting, we only need ten signatures with citizens, we'll do it that way. Other ways, in other instances, we have some projects that are going on and this project would be enhanced if there was a zoning change. And we have these midstream type of work with different planning boards. That's the angle that we'd like to approach you folks from. We couldn't get a hundred signatures in a week and frankly, the process, you know, special town meetings are supposed to be narrow, right? They're more, they're not the general spring town meeting, so the bar is very high. Likelihood of getting the hundred signatures, just, you know, it's really not feasible. So what we want to do is come in and request if the planning board, and again, we'll, you know, we can provide whatever exhibits support, but if the planning board would be amenable to sponsoring this, we still have to, I believe, probably go to selectmen for their comment, probably finance committee. We think that this really is very meritorious, it's got the opportunity to be very good for the town. By hitting the November cycle, it also is on cycle for, we've got an extension on the purchase and sale agreement, so that will allow us to move kind of quickly. The Attorney General's Office, when it's not coming off the spring, they're a little quicker. And the Ad Law Department are going through the, you know, going through the zoning changes. And then also just your town council, we're very familiar with, we do a lot of work with them, so they, you know, they do this all the time.
So just a little background, so I did speak with Nate Darling about this, he did recommend it, he actually, he asked for the placeholder for the special town meeting. I didn't want to make a determination before they came before this board, so that's why they're here this evening. If this board is agreeable, we would likely sponsor this as a zoning change. My, my personal thought was I didn't expect it to be contentious, but there was a gentleman here, he didn't have a chance to speak. Kathy, did you have a chance to speak with him today? Do you know what his concerns were at all?
Uh, he just, he owns some property, so he kind of just wanted to know what's going on.
Okay, so I guess, I mean, we'd have to hold a public hearing for a zoning change. And so at that point, we may run into it, also you'd need a two-thirds majority at town meeting to pass a zoning change.
Correct.
We would want you to be able to speak to it, not necessarily give a presentation because we would be sponsoring it if the board is amenable. But everything that he said, I mean, it's a priority development area, it's Route forty-four, it's right on the edge of Taunton, it's industrial, it's not anything that's going to be taxing on the school system, it's going to generate some revenue, we talk about economic development constantly, where can we, you know, gain some economic development? This would be the ideal location. So, but I'd like to.
Yeah, no. So the lot on the Taunton side, you guys are looking to purchase that one too?
Yes.
Right, so you wouldn't butt up against, and that's already industrial by Taunton?
Yes.
That side of it, so adjacent to two and three, it's already industrial. I was wondering, like, don't want it to be residential and, you know, I mean, they, someone, so you guys don't buy and someone tries to put a house and then we're obviously before, it's not up before you.
The closest residential is.
Oh, there's Viles of, yeah.
Of Cross, Cross Street.
Yeah, if you, if you don't mind holding up this.
So do you want me to, here's the other thing I can do.
No, I'd rather, rather the other way.
Oh, you're the other way, okay. So these are now, these are different, so the closest residential to this is, if I can orient really quickly, if I go to the absolute point up off of Cross Street, it's over a quarter of a mile away.
Right.
And it's through.
This parcel, this large parcel to the southeast of number one is actually a landlocked parcel that is very, it's got a lot of wetlands, it's undeveloped. The parcel south of the boundary line between one and two, that's actually land owned by Wildland's Trust. So that's already in a conservation restriction, so there is no residential over there. And also if it were to be zoned industrial, we know that if they were to go through site plan review, because they are bordering on a residential zone, they would have to provide necessary.
The other thing is, and I know you, I'll show you a little bit of the Lakeville, just, that goes up.
If you can flip that one around though, that.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, now you're really messing with me. All right, so, oh boy, okay, so north, north is up. So this parcel goes down in this area and you can see all the hatching here, all this coming, so that's all conservation restriction. In order to work on the land down Lakeville, we're going through, we've got Brian Madden, who's fantastic LSP, he's going down and he's going to be purchasing parcels for conservation that wind up, you know, they're purchased and then those, that acreage goes towards offsetting to allow for, you know, various ratios to be.
Purchasing from?
Purchasing, no, just from, from, you know, other parties. So it's just, it's something that's not related to these folks necessarily or to Lakeville at all, but on behalf of the McGee family, in order to, in order to make some of that land more usable because of the ratios, it's got, you know, conservation ratios. So he's actually going out, he's working with the town of Taunton, so it's a very collaborative process to grab landlocked parcels and then to put restrictions on them. So it's a little extraneous to where you folks are, but that was the other thing that is interesting. In the master plan, it talks about develop where appropriate and it says, you know, we also have priority habitat areas. This is already conservation restricted by natural heritage. So we know where the hard lines are, you know, when I'm talking about various areas, that's all outside, you know, the areas here that are to the east are all outside of, outside of those areas. It's got a strange shape, so winds up, it winds up being amenable to, you know, their being able to, you know, put something back there, screen it adequately.
Yeah.
And then when everything comes into you, you've got to wind up with a site plan review anyways.
Yep.
And standard for this is not, you know, does not decrease neighboring values, noise, odor, you know, et cetera. So we'll have to, we'll have to meet, you know, make a presentation and show you what those are.
Yeah, and without getting into a site plan review sort of items, are you, now you said earthwork, but is this like asphalt milling?
Um, is it asphalt milling, crunching?
It could be some millings, broken asphalt and we take it and we process it and turn into gravel and then reuse it, so we recycle asphalt.
So I guess the challenge would be mitigating smell, I guess? If there's like, because there's a restaurant right there, so.
So the, it's old asphalt, so there isn't asphalt smell like in new asphalt, there's really no odor to it.
Okay.
So it's just like it's more friable when they just.
Yeah, it's all brittle and.
He's crushing it up pretty much.
Yeah.
Breaking it up ready for the.
So then that gets, you know, kind of broken down and then that can be processed into something which then can be reused, you know, offsite, it's mixed with asphalt.
You don't do that seal coating, do you?
The mixing, the mixing with asphalt would happen offsite.
Does that occur or?
So we don't mix it with new asphalt, we just crush it as is.
Yeah.
And that turns it into gravel and then we just reuse it as gravel.
So that's the base.
Yep, it's the base under a parking lot, for instance.
Okay. And then your question?
Did you seal coating as well or?
We do do seal coating, yes.
They do lot striping.
Yeah, I see the signs around all over the place.
Sidewalks, curving, you know.
But this is mainly to be a corporate headquarters?
Yes.
It might be snowplows, you know, in this corner in the summertime because you've got to put them somewhere, you know, like the blades, you know, things like that, so, you know, kind of dry lay down areas, but it just allows them some more elbow room to be able to work around them.
So what do you guys think?
I'm, I want to say I'm one hundred percent in favor of this zoning change.
Yeah.
I question whether there should be any discussions about proposed use at this point. I think it'd be safer presenting it to town meeting without.
No, I mean, they definitely have to present at town meeting, give some idea of what that use is going to be because if not, you know, nobody's gonna go for it if you come in and say, we don't know what we're building, just approve this.
Well, you know, I guess, I guess I'm saying, you know, kind of take them out of it and it's, and it's, you know, the planning board kind of addressing the priority areas, kind of handling something that should have been handled years ago.
Well, I think mindful of prior town meetings where someone will go up and say, what are you going to do with this thing? I think you need to be prepared to answer that question. I mean, I don't know if they have to be proactive, but at least you need to be prepared to answer the question satisfactorily because there's some of these meetings going to be quite interesting.
Well, so because they're not residents, they will have to get permission from town meeting in order to speak.
Yeah.
So they'll have to get a vote just to speak as well.
Yes. So I'm, I'm in favor of it, yeah.
Yeah, I am, I am.
So you're comfortable with the planning board?
I'm comfortable with that, I was just talking about how you approach it.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's not enough to say, oh, ultimately we'll have to come back for a permit, but we understand, that's why we also showed the building, right? So, you know, we want to be right up front clear, you know. If we came in and we said, we just want it to be industrial and, you know, there's no real up advantage to Lakeville, you know, that's kind of empty. So in order to come in before you folks, you know, ten thousand square foot, you know, corporate headquarters, Boston Globe top places to work in twenty twenty-three and, you know, again, like they do, they do job training, they do college sales internships. This is a company that's very, very much involved in the community, extremely involved in the community. And it's not just X number of employees, but you know, as time goes by, not all the employees live down in Lakeville, but guess what happens over time? You know, there's, there's an accumulation of local and that could be a real, brand new building, ten thousand square feet, it could be a real, real start for a great employer for the town.
You don't foresee any resistance to you getting up and making a presentation at the town anyway?
No, we've never, no. Everyone we've talked to so far, and I can't say we've talked to a lot of people, but it's not like, people said kind of what you said, like if we're going to do this anywhere in town, it kind of makes sense there. If you don't do it, if you don't do it here, don't do it, don't do it anywhere.
Right.
And then, you know, I don't, there's not, that's the other thing too. Because of the land and the shape, et cetera, like it's, this is, this fits, this fits that building, it fits the parking that you need, it's just, it's a, it's a good fit. The Taunton, it goes long out back and it's a little, it's a little different just because of the land area and the shape and all that, so.
Is now the immediate next business in Taunton, is that the Tire Barn?
The next one in Taunton, I don't know, that would be.
I believe so.
It is, it's Kelly's.
Off map.
It's Kelly's, yeah.
And then, so my suggestion to you would be to reach out to the owner of the business park next door, because I think that's who showed up. So if you can, you know, address that right now, kind of answer any of the questions because obviously he wanted to, maybe, because we didn't have anybody in here, so maybe he didn't think somebody was coming. I don't know if you've met him or not, so.
Kathy, do you have his name? I don't know if he thought five Harding was that and then went through it.
Probably can look it up, I don't recall just off the top of my head right now.
Okay, well, if he's home watching online, please call us. Yeah, that's good.
And you can, you could, there's a way of looking through the assessors map as well to find the.
So it was, it was Millennium?
I believe he was right here at the business park.
Okay, great.
Do you know Kathy? He had a, it sounded like an Irish brogue, I would say.
All right.
But he said the business park, so I'm assuming it was not the industrial park, it was next door to you guys.
Okay, great.
Like Muckeys?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, that sounds good, so we'll do that. We've got, it's been such a short, things have moved quickly and we had such a short window of time and we've accomplished what we could, we will definitely reach out, but just getting in before you folks, you know, we appreciate it because it was such a small window and working with Nate, we got it down to the last, you know, the last day to submit it, so.
And I mean, it seems like a pretty straightforward, this is not a big ask, I don't think, from town meeting. this is not a big ask, I don't think, from town meeting. Now, Kathy and I, we did discuss dates for public hearings coming up. I think it was October 24th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we would schedule this for that evening for the public hearing, October 24th.
Did they already put out, this was already planned?
So, he put a placeholder and we're going to take a vote and then I will send the recommendations.
There's already a placeholder, so yeah.
So, yeah, so then tomorrow I'll let Bob Noons know how the planning board determine. So, if somebody would like to make a vote or take a, make a motion for a positive recommendation?
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to make a positive recommendation for the zoning, proposed zoning amendment changed to 15 Harding Street, 17 Harding Street and 21 Harding Street.
All right, we have a motion.
Exactly, good.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Motion carries.
Just be prepared to have a presentation of what you're going to do.
Well, I don't think he'd be presenting to town meeting. He can present at the public hearing. At town meeting, I don't think it would be presented. It, like, I would read the article and then if he wants to come up to speak to it, he would come up to speak to it. But I don't think he's going to present.
No, but for the public hearing, people will want to know, some, some towns, some towns, they say, they play it very, very, very straight. They say, this is a town zoning and it doesn't matter what you, you know, it's just, and the towns are agnostic as to what's happening. In this instance, it's an extension of an existing zone. It's very much something we can point to and we brought this in because we will be prepared to do that. We didn't want to, we can only go into so much detail of where things would go, but we can talk about what the uses are. Because obviously, nothing's permitted yet.
And then the other thing is, I, you know, now that I'm saying he wouldn't present, but maybe just to have something, maybe we could connect you with Lakeham just so that they maybe could have two slides to show if necessary. But I don't know if that's.
I think more the one here, right there.
I would want to see the zoning.
Both, I think, I know. Because I think people are not going to know what. The one up there is kind of showing you what's, what's there. This one, we've known.
Right.
Just to kind of depict of what we're, what you're putting where just because of what, what's already there, this.
Right. Because I don't want to go into a site plan review at town meeting either.
Took the labels off because we actually have labeled it. We've pitched the building, but it's all midstream and nothing's, it's still so early, so that's a.
No, you don't want to, you don't want to present something that could, could or may or may not tweak or change and then you're.
Yeah.
I don't like such and such. It's like, it doesn't have to be there, but this, this is.
It's really just a zoning change. Because you could sell it and now it's industrial and someone else could come in and do something else that's approved industrial.
But that's why we wanted to be very upfront about, and that's why these gentlemen are here to veer 10,000 square foot that, you know, and I have it, that's why I gave you this in writing so that someone comes in, you know, X number of years from now and the world's on its ear, you can say, eh, this zoning change was based on X, Y, and Z. We have to cite, you know, that's going to affect site plan. But that's why we put this in writing so you folks would know.
Did you have a question, Jack?
You know, Michelle, I guess, my only concern was having gone to some of these town meetings where someone gets up and then all of a sudden someone could go, see, I want to speak, I want to get up and talk. And if they say that, you need to be prepared for a very simple upfront boom, 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 this is what we're going to do.
So, when I, when I email Bob tomorrow, I'll let him know that we're going to be looking for you to speak at town meeting. Would it be your attorney only? Would you, okay.
I'll, I'll read, come, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what we usually do is we usually submit the names in advance.
Okay, yeah, so that's what I'd need to send over to Bob Noons. And I will ask if there is a desire for you to present to select board as well as present a couple of slides.
You're going to do the presentation?
Probably. And then if, it's interesting, the special town meeting, so, you know, usually, usually in the spring rotation, the selectmen will ask to, you know, to have a hearing so that they can opine on it or finance, et cetera. So, I can follow up with KP or a few folks.
Well, I'll send it over, like I said, I'll send it up. So, Bob Noons is the interim T I.
Right.
Right now, acting town administrator. So, I'll see what they want to do.
And anything, and I put it in, it's, we'll make presentations and we'll, you know, if you want changes to any of the exhibits, because we've, you know, we've got all our nomenclature on it. We can get everything and basically make it all, you know, more town of Lakeville branded, et cetera. Just, you know, less, less private, you know, edition on the exhibit so that you folks can put it in the warrant to publish it, whatever you need to do.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to send it over, you know, because you already have the proposed zoning amendment. So, I'll send him that. Well, he has it as a placeholder.
We just made it as simple as, it's, it's good. It's also based on, you've had other zoning amendments in the past. So, we modeled it several years ago. But we modeled it on things that have already been used by Lakeville.
All right. Well, reach out to your neighbor and we'll see you.
See you soon.
Yeah, in a month.
Hi, neighbor. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, agenda item number five. We have a set of minutes from July 25th, 2024. Has everyone had a chance to review these minutes? Were there any edits? You know what? I think there was one item. And I wasn't sure if it was supposed to be like that or not, Kathy. On page three, under the old business items, where you have the list of everything that was edited?
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight down, where it says delete one, is that supposed to have a parenthesis?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question. Other than that, I thought they looked good. Do we have a motion to?
How do we do this? Because you and Jack were the only two there. We were, could we go in?
Um, did you watch the meeting?
No, you're not.
So.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Me and Jack would, Jack, would you like to make the motion to approve? Because we would be the majority of members who attended.
Yeah.
That evening, so we can vote on it.
Okay, and make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for July 25th, 2024.
All right, we have a motion and I will second. All in favor? Aye. And to abstain or?
Yeah, abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. And then it's passed with the minor majority. Or whatever it is. All right. Item number six, update on proposed articles for town meeting. So, of the five items that we had discussed sending to town meeting, so far, we have moved forward with the definition of ADU. That has been sent off to town council for review. My question to her was, does it have to replace the existing accessory apartment bylaw language? And she said it could, or you can leave it, see how it goes, because it could potentially allow an accessory apartment as well as an ADU, so you might want to get rid of it. But she said for now, we could leave it and look at it again in spring. We are already kind of ahead of the game because we're going to add these ADU definitions in fall as opposed to waiting until spring.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's one. The next one was adding the word contiguous to the frontage. That one's been sent over for review. We also have an accessory structure addition to the bylaws. I did work with a resident who had some input because the reason that we looked at this accessory structure was because there have been complaints and it looked like there is a hole in our zoning that allows for a warehouse size accessory structure in a residential neighborhood. So, I went over that with him. I did touch base with John, too. I didn't want to work in a vacuum. And so, we sent that off to town meeting as well. So, when we have drafts of that, we will get those out to you all and we'll have the public hearing for those. Now, we have this fourth item that we will be sponsoring for the zoning change to industrial off of Harding. The other two items, one is the 40R expansion. At this point, it's, we're basically just in a holding pattern. It didn't, so I met with town council, Bob Noons, Brian Day, Nate Darling, and we discussed the options at this point because E O H L C had kind of looked at it and said, you know, we, you could submit a 40R expansion to town meeting, but typically, they like to review it first. So, if we got it approved at town meeting, it might not necessarily be approved at E O H L C. That being said, it's, it's kind of proceed at your own risk. Second of all, though, this is what the hardship is. They don't like to approve a 40R zone where there's already a 40B proposed. So, because we already have a letter from Mass Housing, so then it kind of becomes a no-go. And then it, then it become, then what we discussed was looking at, are there other areas that we would extend that same 40R district, the new expansion, over? The problem is, if you're creating a 40R allowance with the densities that Rhino is looking for, for that 40B, to make it palatable for them, I believe it was like 23 to 25 units per acre was the density. So, do we really want to create, you know, pull more parcels that have 23 to 25? And now, this is, now, don't forget, 40R, it's like site plan review. It just goes to the P P A, Plan Approval Authority, that's planning board. It's not a special permit, it's not a comprehensive permit. It's like a, like a by right use through site plan review. So, now, we would have to allow those high densities in other areas and just where we'd see that. So, right now, it's in a holding pattern. The thought was to wait, hold off, see how they, they do through the 40B process and potentially, if necessary, we'll look at it for spring. So, right now, it's off the table for fall.
Okay.
Uh, that being said, OSRD was the other item. And at first, I was like in a frantic, let's see if we can meet. But then Nate had reached out to the applicant attorney. There had been some discussion about, you know, would they wait till spring so that we can actually do it right rather than trying to craft a OSRD that's not just going to work for this one area, that works for the whole town?
Right.
Then we have this email in our packet. It's from Bob Mather. I'm going to just read it into the record, it's only a paragraph. It's in response to Nate's email. So, it says, good morning, Mr. Darling. Thank you for your email. I have discussed this matter with Mr. Itany and we are in agreement that there does not appear to be sufficient time to develop an open space residential development bylaw that is acceptable to the developer and the town for submission to the town at fall special town meeting in November. My client fully agrees with the concept of converting the proposed Simmons Hill 40B development into an open space residential development that is acceptable to both the developer and the town. We agree that this will require a significant amount of time and work to draft an acceptable bylaw and educate the public to the point where the adoption of the bylaw at town meeting is likely. Our hearing before a zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit has been extended until December 9th, 2024. Provided that there has been progress towards the creation of an acceptable open space development bylaw, we will agree at the December 19th, 2024 meeting to further continue our hearing with the objective of presenting an acceptable bylaw at the 2025 annual spring meeting. We would like to begin work immediately on the development of an acceptable bylaw. Please let me know how the town would like to proceed at this time. So, that being said, I think we should start thinking ahead. I don't want to plan something before town meeting right now. We have a lot on our plate up until that time. But after town meeting, I'd like to get a meeting with not just the developer, but also, I think we need to meet with conservation, open space. We should meet with members from the Naragansett tribe. I know Cora Pierce has been very active in showing up. I think, you know, and from speaking with Mr. Darling, it, it sounds like it's ideal to focus on just those 300 acres to begin with for the OSRD and to identify areas of preservation with those boards, committees and the tribe. And then, once we have the excluded areas, to, you know, work with the developer and see.
Yeah.
What can you do within this allotment preserving these items? This area, these areas.
This Rocky Woods we're talking about?
Correct.
And this, is Simons Hills, is one of his?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. So, that.
Simons Hills is formerly known as Rocky Woods.
Yeah.
Right.
Keeps changing the name, too.
Yeah, I think he creates a new LLC every project.
Yeah.
So, looking at town meeting is, I think it's November 12th, right?
November 12th.
Yeah.
I was just looking that up to make sure.
So, we have a planning board meeting on November 14th. That's the one that's joint with Z B A, right, Kathy? Okay, so we're going to be having a joint meeting with Z B A for the, for another matter.
But that'll be our only one then, huh?
Oh, gosh, and then Thanksgiving's the 28th. So, I wonder if we should plan it for December 12th? See how many people we can get.
Didn't they say, was not, what was, were they doing this? Weren't they doing this on December 12th?
Oh, does Z B A have a meeting on December 12th?
No, it was December, I'm sorry, December 19th.
Oh. So, I don't know if we should pick an alternative date now or if there is an issue, maybe we'll just discuss it at our next meeting. But let's potentially aim for 12/12.[1625.96] And Kathy, would you send out an email to the Chair of Conservation, Open Space? Uh, do you have Cora Pierce's?
Yep.
Cora? And I don't, I, I don't know if we should just meet with those initially and then the developer, but we might as well extend it to them because I think, you know, uh, if you want to reach out to Mather as well, that way he knows we are working towards this. And we can see if we can narrow down some areas and move it along that, from there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then other than that, I think we'd be looking for the developer to provide, um, any feedback that they have to what's drafted so far with the OSRD. And then we can also discuss, like, um, any changes.
Okay.
As well. So that's the plan, so December 12th. Okay. Other than that, any questions, comments on town meeting?
No.
Articles, no. Okay, so we have the public hearing date of, no. What did we say Kathy? Uh, October 24th, right?
Yep.
Okay. So October 24th.
Now you're going to have all those on that meeting? Those four?
I guess so. Yeah, I think we, I mean, we have to. It's not really kind of cutting it close.
Yeah.
All right, um, public hearing, 10:24.
Busy meeting.
Yeah. All of these seem to be. I mean, we've been lucky, a couple have continued. All right. Moving on, agenda item number seven, planning board goals. All right, let's see. I don't know if we want to go through all of them or just the, the ones that I kind of highlighted.
Mm-hmm.
So item, goal number six, uh, actually has to do with what we just discussed, talking about, um, our current, uh, smart growth overlay. It also talks about, so it's, the goal is complete review of 40R, 40B and 3A for identification of applicable property. So from what Serpent had previously looked at and told us, we should be in compliance with the state's 3A, which is also the MBTA zoning requirements. I know Kathy, you said that you have the application and you said you were going to be working on it. It's not due until the end of 2025, December 2025. But has, that's, that's just, is there any other update with that? Just still kind of plugging away if you have a chance?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um. Number seven, review planning board rules and regs to ensure consistency and up to date. Target a complete review within five years. So, uh, we did the minor revisions as well as approving the, the fees just recently. We have a grant through the One Stop and that has been submitted. I think we should be hearing something by, oh, I think they said September, October. I'm assuming if anything's hard, we'd hear from Bob. Other than that, so the reason we would be looking for the One Stop grant is to do a complete overhaul of the rules and regulations and, um, all those, you know, um, items that pertain to roads where we've talked about having a minor, or not a minor, a major, a, um, a road that would be accepted by the town versus one that would remain private so that we would have it tiered. And so the developer would know right off the bat, this is the road, I got to go for this and this is what I have to go through for that. And hopefully to, uh, take away all of the, or the waivers that are requested so that we have one that's not as detailed and one that's more, uh, required, requirements for approval. So that one, we're waiting on that to see if we can move forward with that. We have number nine, implementation of applicable master plan goals. Jack, this is your opportunity. Do you have any questions from master plan? No?
No, I mean, I mean, I could, I can bring you a copy of it or I could send a copy of the master plan to you folks, but we're going to meet with the select board, um, this week.
Yeah.
And that got canceled till October 5th, I believe.
Okay.
But, but the select board is, it, I know, I, in, in all modesty, my suggestion to them was, we need to get each one of the boards in front of us and tell us, here's what the goals that you're supposed to be achieving. Where are we? That's really, that's really where.
That makes sense, yeah.
And, uh, we did, Mark was the first one.
Yeah.
And after that, we haven't had anybody, I don't believe. I could be wrong. But, you know, um.
A lot of these goals are collaborative too. So it doesn't just involve like one department or one board or committee. It's a lot of collab.
And so that was mainly the discussion. And, uh, the chairman said that he would start to get, make a list of the different boards, you can go one by one and start, and prioritize them as which ones should be the next one. Obviously the planning board should be first. You know, the finance and on and on. And then have them come in and knowing in advance what we were going to be asking, where have they, where are they in achieving their goals?
Right. Well, you can let them know that right now we are working on an OSRD again. So it continues.
And I, and I.
Oh, and also, Jack. So priority, um, I did send it to Rita. Um, the priority protection maps.
Hmm.
Because that's a map that now that Serpent has.
Right.
Has, uh, updated it. That would be included in the next master plan when they go through and update maps. So I did send that off.
I, um,
So.
You know, we, we, we talked about that at the meeting. And I said, so I told them, kind of told where we were going. But it would be good that, and I said, mindful of the, the change in the chairmanship at the planning board, it might be good to have Michelle come back in and just, and update us on where we were going. And I, I kind of gave them a sense of the things we were working on. I said, but I think it's better to have the chairman come. And I think in every case, it should be, they should have the chairman there each one of the meetings.
Well, I think, so that's why we have, you know, we designated a member to be that sort of liaison. So that's why if you, this is going to be your opportunity when we go over the goals. So this will be your opportunity when you're at the, uh, master plan. Take down your question, like any questions that they have for us. Or, you know, if you're here with us and we say, okay, this is a master plan goal, so you can take the note. And, you know, next time you go to that meeting, you can say, well, planning board is working on this, um, so here's another item. So we're, we're, we have a proposed industrial zone expansion for Harding Street, so you can let them know that. We have the open space residential. We're, we're looking into still, um, for that. And we did just.
What we're doing at the hospital or?
So.
What happened here next to CVS? Might bring them up today. Well, you tell me, you know, I guess.
So, I mean, so anything that pertains to master plan goals, you know, the goals that are listed in that master plan, anything that pertains to those goals that we're kind of working towards, that would be what, you know, you, you say, this is what planning board's working on and you, you relay it to them.
I'll do that. I mean, I think I'll go back now and do that. Then I'll review with you so, because we're going to have the meeting. We're having a meeting with the select board.
Yeah. So their goals are going to be different. The select board.
I understand that.
Be a little different.
But they may come back and I, I think we'll do that. Get our goals in line with what the master plan wants and then I can review them at the next meeting. It would be interesting to see what happens at this select board meeting and what they, what they're asking, what they want. And then I can relay that back to you guys at, at our next meeting.
Yeah. But well, so you know, like in, in the master plan, it'll show goals and it'll show, you know, parties involved. And so sometimes, you know, it'll be maybe select board working with planning board. Sometimes they have their own goals and we have our own. So something, sometimes there are overlaps and sometimes, you know, if it's a zoning thing that we're, you know, is geared more towards planning board.
I'll take a look at that tomorrow.
All right. So then that way, like when we do the goals update, you can know to just maybe, you know, bring communications.
Yeah.
So that we can kind of go through you and communicate all those. So it doesn't have to be just like, um, you know, trying to fit in a meeting. If you're able to communicate it as we're going through it, it should help so that, you know, they, they do feel up to date too. But obviously there's times during the year where maybe we're not working towards one of those goals because there's other things. But now, right now, being right before town meeting, we're working on those, those items.
Rodney usually doesn't turn to me and say so. I, occasionally does he. You, we just kind of go through them and what we've been trying to, what I've, what I've been trying to do is to get a program in place where we bring them in one by one because I've been there three years. We've never done that. I mean, I, I have no idea what some, in all due respect to everybody, what some of these other committees are doing or boards are doing. I think it's, it's a master plan, people, we should know that. We should be able to then put that on the master plan that really has put together saying, okay, they've done this and then this. So we see that.
Right.
And, uh, anyways, I'll work on it.
All right, sounds good, Jack. So we'll, so just keep an eye out. Next time we have planning board goals come around, maybe you can jot down some notes or something to, that pertain to that. Awesome. All right, uh, goal number 10, adopt stormwater management bylaw. So this one, um, I had reached out to Serpent. Serpent has the available funds. They have someone who can do the work. However, she's out on maternity leave. And since she's out on maternity leave, that means they're a little bit short. I did communicate with the person who is covering for her and she just wanted to check and make sure that nothing's slipping, slipping through the cracks. But I let her know, I, I talked to her, Danica, um, and she thinks that as soon as she gets back, she said she'll prioritize it. We sent her a draft. She said the draft looks good. She wants to go through it very, um, carefully. And then she should have something by the end of calendar year for us to review. So the goal would be to get that stormwater bylaw for spring of next year. So the great thing is Serpent is going to be able to do the work. We just have to wait until they have availability to get it done. And then, uh, we can move that forward. All right. Uh, item number 10, 11, update priority protection in development areas. I circulated the drafts. We have those. Um, they're waiting to go live with a full regional map. Um, like I said, I, I hope, uh, master plan has a copy of it as well. Down to item number 16, I added monthly updates from Serpent rep, David. Anything from them you'd like to share?
And nothing much has been going on right now. They had their, their annual dinner last night.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, which, which I didn't, uh, I didn't go to. But, uh, um, otherwise it's, it's been pretty quiet.
Okay.
Over there.
All right. Anything else for the goals right now?
No.
Okay. We'll just kind of keep kicking this can down the road. Should we say? I'm hesitant to even put it on October 24th if we're going to do all the public hearings that night. But should we just put it on just to keep it? And then we'll just kick it off till the next month if necessary?
True.
Okay, so we'll put it on for October 24th. And agenda item number eight, administrative updates. Kathy, what do you have for us?
First one, Stow Estates. So EP was out there yesterday doing the initial inspection of what's going on at the site. You should have that back for next week with the estimate.
Okay.
So hopefully, um, for that following meeting, you can release the law. You can release the law slot.
Oh, excellent. Good.
See. Next, 43 Main Street on your next meeting. Um, EP's confirmed that for the civil review, they can come in. I'm waiting to hear back from, from John O'Leary. And then for 1114, we're going to have a joint meeting with the zoning board to review the traffic. So because the traffic review was done on the whole master plan, it really didn't make sense to try to break that up. And it doesn't make sense to do a two, you know, two separate reviews. So that was thought to be the best way, most efficient way to handle that.
And that's at the library, right?
That's at the library.
Okay.
I think that was.
That's November 1?
November 14th, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Very good. Yeah, lots going on. And when she first said traffic, I was thinking, she was like talking about the master plan traffic thing to do like a deep dive. I'm like, oh God, right now? And then, then I kind of understood what she meant by the traffic study was ZBA. Oh yeah, that's what you mean. All right. So our next meeting will be October 10th at, uh, 2024 at the Lakeville Police Station. Do we have any other business? No other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.